Those who are asking, did you say Biafra will come in 2023? Biafra has been restored already. What is remaining is a complete declaration that will be defended. And before that happens, there are many things that we need to put in place. I want you to recount the achievement of the Biafra Republic government in Exa, under the leadership of Simon Ekba, what we have achieved in 2023, and ask yourself that question again, and you will look very stupid. We have been able to form government in Exa in 2023. In 2023, we have formed the de facto government. In 2023, we have launched Biafra Liberation Army. In 2023, we launched Biafra Navy. We launched Biafra Air Force. We launched the forces of Biafra. In 2023, we adopted Helsinki Declaration, which is the constitution of Biafra. In 2023, we had a convention in Finland, where Biafra people gathered from all over the world as delegates to vote on the Biafra charter, which is a living document subjected to amendment. In 2023, we have created 40 states of Biafra. And believe me, many more states will come, because we are not done yet. In 2023, not only that we created state, we also brought a redesigned and redrawn Biafra map to reflect the current situation and the current demography of Biafra. In 2023, we started engaging officially Nigeria state in a guerrilla warfare on self-defense. In 2023, we officially and publicly engaged Nigeria terrorist army, and we are neutralizing them on daily basis. It has never happened before in the history of Biafra after the war. In 2023, we publicly and openly made sure that Nigeria doesn't kill again in Biafra land and go free. So if you look at those things I've mentioned and those wars I have not even mentioned, are you still going to challenge Simon Ekba that Biafra has not been restored in 2023? The Biafra declaration is not about mouth pronouncement. It's about putting every structure in place. It's about putting every mechanism and measures in place to shaping the map and the structure of Biafra. In 2023, we have designed the economic viability of Biafra. In 2023, we have kicked off the Biafra urban development project. In 2023, we've made a lot of impact globally. In 2023, the Biafra awareness gained the highest momentum in the history of Biafra since after the war. In 2023, we made the Nigeria terrorist army to cry on the floor of National Assembly. It has never happened in the history of Nigeria. In 2023, those who are serving as the agent of Nigeria, benefiting from the corrupt entity called Nigeria, openly called for persecution, execution, and the kidnapping and arresting of Simon Ekba, because they know that this is a different thing from what they have seen in their entire lives. In 2023, they call for the arrest of Simon Ekba and call for the release of Mazinam Di Kanu, Confucian. In 2023, after they have used many years to plan the kidnapping of Mazinam Di Kanu, they have come to say Mazinam Di Kanu is a saint. He's a very gentle man, he's a nice person. But just two years ago, they kidnapped this nice person from Kenya. Two years ago, they tortured him for eight days. Two years ago, he was an evil man. Two years ago, they called him terrorist. Two years ago, he was everything evil to them. Two years ago, they spent hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. They kidnapped him and put him into private jet from Kenya to Nigeria. Two years ago, Mazinam Di Kanu was everything evil to Nigeria, including to Arne Zendiwo and all of them. Two years ago, he was the only problem of Nigeria. Two years ago, he was the only person that constituted all manner of insecurity in Nigeria. He was the one who is more deadly than Boko Haram. He was everything that Nigeria don't want to see. Today, as Simon Ekba take the Biafra liberation to the next level, the same people are now calling Mazinam Di Kanu the most sensible person. These are hypocrite, these are devilish people, these are criminals, that only thing they want to do is to give dog a bad name in order to kill it. They have given bad that name to Mazinam Di Kanu. They themselves were the one who condemned Mazinam Di Kanu. The same people today, they have seen that, yes indeed, someone actually followed this footsteps of Mazinam Di Kanu and ready to drag all of them to Biafra land. When we get to Biafra land, we will treat their fuck up very well. Today, the same people who gave the bad name to Mazinam Di Kanu in order to be kidnapped, they slandered his name, blackmailed him to other ethnic nationalities in Nigeria. All of them today has come to say that Mazinam Di Kanu is very sensible. Now it is Simon Ekba is the problem. These people who are just evil from bed refuse to understand why Simon Ekba have decided to take this thing upon himself to liberate the people of Biafra who has been subjugated and chained with Islamic State agenda. They found themselves in a hole. They tagged us, thought in a circle, because they thought that they have actually systematically conquered everybody by dividing, creating state, dividing us, changing the demography and map of Biafra people. And at the end of the day, they structured out five tiny state, called it Five Eastern States. And they say, let us continue to divide them. And now they tell you, oh, you are talking about Biafra. You are just five state in the circle. We have come to destroy their evil agenda. Today, you will understand that the plan of the Islamic State has failed. Today, the Biafra people are proudly announcing the 40 state, which is called the United States of Biafra. Forty complete state, cut across board, including in the area where they claim they were never Biafra. I have come to learn from what Biafra did wrong in 1967 to 1970. I have come to learn what was Rike did wrong from the time he started the Biafra movement. And I have come to learn what Mazinam Di Kanu did right and was in the process of doing before they planned and kidnapped him. I continue from there, and today, we are where we are. They are not resting. Those IPOB Nigeria are not resting as well. Every given opportunity, they think that there is infight in the Biafra government. They will say, oh, their hope now is that they are fighting. And they are hoping that there is infight in the Biafra government. That is to tell you that, like we said, there are cost. There are cost, and they can never rise again. Biafra government in Exa is a government that nobody born of a woman marching on this planet, using your foot to walk on the ground, will ever, ever destroy. Biafra has been restored in 2023. We have a government, we have a structure of the government of Biafra. We have every department that made Biafra government a legitimate government. The people of Biafra are loyal to the government, both in the Exa and in the homeland. We have governors, state administrators in all the 40 states of Biafra. We have the deputy governors, which is called administrators. We have the secretary of state of each state in Biafra land. We have the chairman and managers of county and the district. If you do not understand that with this structure we have now, one day, you will sleep in Nigeria and wake up in Biafra. It means that you are an idiot. I told you that by the time I finish with Nigeria, you will sleep in Nigeria one day and wake up in Biafra. The next phase is to set up the police of Biafra. The reason why we have not set up the police is because it is going to be state police. Every state will have their police. Every state will be independent. It is going to be local police, and there is no interference from the central government of Biafra. The military is a joint military. It's one military that will protect this territorial integrity of Biafra. When one state is attacked, it means that you have attacked all of us. So my people, for those who are asking when are you going to declare Biafra? We have already declared Biafra. We are only waiting for us to conclude the last phase of the Biafra government, and one day, you will sleep and wake up in Biafra, like I said. Then, we must capture every cranny of the Biafra territory. Those who are asking, did you say Biafra will come in 2023? Biafra has been restored already. What is remaining is a complete declaration that will be defended. And before that happens, there are many things that we need to put in place. I want you to recount the achievement of the Biafra Republic government in Exa, under the leadership of Simon Ekba, what we have achieved in 2023, and ask yourself that question again, and you will look very stupid. We have been able to form government in Exa in 2023. In 2023, we have formed the de facto government. In 2023, we have launched Biafra Liberation Army. In 2023, we launched Biafra Navy. We launched Biafra Air Force. We launched the forces of Biafra. In 2023, we adopted Helsinki Declaration, which is the constitution of Biafra. In 2023, we had a convention in Finland, where Biafra people gathered from all over the world as delegates to vote on the Biafra charter, which is a living document subjected to amendment. In 2023, we have created 40 states of Biafra. And believe me, many more states will come, because we are not done yet. In 2023, not only that we created state, we also brought a redesigned and redrawn Biafra map to reflect the current situation and the current demography of Biafra. In 2023, we started engaging...
It won't back down.
The blood still speaks.
You hear it now. Not vengeance, just the sound of truth aloud. They gave jobs to those who killed us, built houses for those who burned. But our mothers sleep in sewage, our church is still unreturned. They call them reformed fighters, we call them neighbors' graves. We bury the baptized, they rebrand the depraved. And every time we cry for help, they quote us stats and peace. But you can't plant hope on land where justice is deceased.
The blood still speaks.
In burning fields, in bucko smoke, in Guazas hills.
The blood still speaks.
In Sunday shoes, still soaked in red, inside the pews.
The blood still speaks.
From girl to god, from grave to sky, from ash to rock. They killed us slow, they named it war. They blamed it tribe, they closed the door. But we know truth, it bleeds then burns. It waits in wells, it always returns. So build your silence tall and proud. Our blood will pull it down out loud.
The blood still speaks.
The blood still roars, it shakes the dome, it breaks the floor.
The blood still speaks.
From every name you failed to say, still flames remain.
The blood still speaks.
Not for revenge, but for the king, the bitter end.
Will not be this.
Will not be shame, will not be silence, will not be blame.
The blood still speaks.
And it speaks your name. We are still here. We are not the end. We are the witness. The blood still speaks. Four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight, gone in one year. Been uber and eighty-five in a week, the world's still clear. Six thousand run from plateau planes, no soldier near. December twenty-five, the killers came, no Christmas cheer. One forty killed in Christmas raids, churches crushed like brittle bones. Pregnant mother, toddler, child, no names, just ashes, stones. They danced on pews we bled to build. They smiled while saints were shot and still, still they call it clash, not plot.
The blood still speaks.
It don't forget, it don't forgive, it cries unreal.
The blood still speaks.
It stains the ground, it marks the map, it won't back down.
The blood still speaks.
You hear it now. Not vengeance, just the sound of truth aloud. They gave jobs to those who killed us, built houses for those who burned. But our mothers sleep in sewage, our church is still unreturned. They call them reformed fighters, we call them neighbors' graves. We bury the baptized, they rebrand the depraved. And every time we cry for help, they quote us stats and peace. But you can't plant hope on land where justice is deceased.
The blood still speaks.
In burning fields, in bucko smoke, in Guazas hills.
The blood still speaks.
In Sunday shoes, still soaked in red, inside the pews.
The blood still speaks.
From girl to god, from grave to sky, from ash to rock. They killed us slow, they named it war. They blamed it tribe, they closed the door. But we know truth, it bleeds then burns. It waits in wells, it always returns. So build your silence tall and proud. Our blood will pull it down out loud.
The blood still speaks.
The blood still roars, it shakes the dome, it breaks the floor.
The blood still speaks.
From every name you failed to say, still flames remain.
The blood still speaks.
Not for revenge, but for the king, the bitter end.
Will not be this.
Will not be shame, will not be silence, will not be blame.
The blood still speaks.
And it speaks your name. We are still here. Four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight, gone in one year. Been uber and eighty-five in a week, the world's still clear. Six thousand run from plateau planes, no soldier near. December twenty-five, the killers came, no Christmas cheer. One forty killed in Christmas raids, churches crushed like brittle bones. Pregnant mother, toddler, child, no names, just ashes, stones. They danced on pews we bled to build. They smiled while saints were shot and still, still they call it clash, not plot.
The blood still speaks.
It don't forget, it don't forgive, it cries unreal.
The blood still speaks.
It stains the ground, it marks the map, it won't back down.
The blood still speaks.
You hear it now. Not vengeance, just the sound of truth aloud. They gave jobs to those who killed us, built houses for those who burned. But our mothers sleep in sewage, our church is still unreturned. They call them reformed fighters, we call them neighbors' graves. We bury the baptized, they rebrand the depraved. And every time we cry for help, they quote us stats and peace. But you can't plant hope on land where justice is deceased.
The blood still speaks.
In burning fields, in bucko smoke, in Guazas hills.
The blood still speaks.
In Sunday shoes, still soaked in red, inside the pews.
The blood still speaks.
From girl to god, from grave to sky, from ash to rock.
Land of the rising sun we love and cherish. We love and hope, land of our brave heroes. We must defend, our lives, oh, we shall perish. We shall protect, our hearts from all our faults. For if the price is that for all we hold dear, then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to be a consecrated nation. Oh, Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Still in our blood will count our privilege. The way we stand, that which and all itself free, shall always be a part of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible unscape we'll pass. When we are void, the wounds of fire to heal. We shall remember those who guide him us. Then shall our children feel the glorious song of victory we scored o mine at all. Oh, God, protect us from the hill pitfall. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to heal the human is born. To give a nod to calm the cosmic chain. Let all who rule to suffer with resolution to make his climb a land of righteousness.
All hail be your throne. Land of the rising sun we love and cherish. We have anquished all enemies. All hail be your throne. God bless be your throne. In him we trust. Shout it, sing it. All hail be your throne. God bless be your throne. We have emerged triumphant from all our faults. Through the crucible unscathed, we passed victorious. Our trumpets pealing the glorious song. Play it, sing it. All hail be your throne. All hail be your throne. We shall always remember all that perished in the struggle for our freedom. All hail our heroes. Our prayers shall be borne both day and night. Save them always. All hail be your throne. All hail be your throne. Now our star shines everywhere. We crave humility. God guide and protect us all. All hail your wisdom. Shielding us from glory unleashed by all and light. Your throne, your throne shining forever.
Okay, the opening prayer should be our leaders' prayer. Mazie Kelly, are you there?
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. I'm here.
Yeah, Mazie Kelly, take the opening prayer, yeah. Okay, he just responded now that he's here. Okay. Okay, let's go with the only.
As long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukwukeke Abiamah must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation, we must proceed to offer every prayer to Chukwukokeke Abiamah who reside in heaven. Therefore, as we always commence, not from today but from of old. Our Father who art in heaven, nanyin kebin eliwe, kahageden song, that your name may be hallowed by men, that we may bow at the mention of it, that we may offer every glory unto thee, that we may offer you every adoration and adulation, because there is none like thee. You fight our battles for us. Every blessed day you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy that you are our Lord, our God, and our Creator. This evening we offer these your children unto thee all over this very planet that you created. They are listening across the entire twenty-four time zones on this very planet. We are the inhabit. They are listening to your gospel this very evening. This gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal. This very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation as only you ordained. Onye putemi henin that this very gospel must be preached, that mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the Spirit because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year we have not only atoned for our sins, we have spilled, we have shed blood, they have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the third year of August, as we are being felled by the bullets of the enemy, by the workers of iniquity and of darkness, we remain very strong today to beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace, to ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth, that you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created for one singular purpose and that purpose alone, which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty. Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have sinned? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. Bikomera nanyebere tineke nanonige. You must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough. We have been subjugated enough. We have been tortured enough. We have been imprisoned enough. We did not do these people anything. Our only crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to be born your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing, which manifestedly is upon our lives. Everybody said that. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you, to destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor, and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty because we remain every blessed day. Chukwakabiamah, believe, greater than white and whiter than snow. Oh, wozanyisimeyutineke. Is there any way that we have sinned that you cannot forgive us, our trespasses, to enable us to fulfill your own word which was spoken thousands of years ago? That instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth will cease to exist. You opened your mouth, Chukwokike Abiamah, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweheshua who came here and said, "Get your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven." Those words can never be in vain because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why in the end we know that Biafra will come, that these children that we have given birth to all over the world and their children and their children and the children, as long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans. Chukwokike Abiamah, they will worship you in truth and honesty. Through the very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be wrought in our lives. Let us witness and be proud of your presence, your holiness, your mystery, and your grace under our command. Oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide succour to. We call upon you to provide succour to those of them who are incapable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, camaraderie, one bone, one blood and one flesh of your children. The effects and the billions, the ison, the security, the sorbals and also those of them from Isoto. We are traveling all the way to the lands of Egala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Igad, to the territories of the Ibo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy because Biafra will come and when it does, Chukokeka Abiama, we will dance on these streets, I'm telling you. By the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad, we are drunk in your glory and rightfully so because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Biafra that your will may be fulfilled in our time. All these we pray, all these we ask for in no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. Ahadense sosi nebiye biwone biye bi. Isen? 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 My name is Namdekanu. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you. I lead... Thank you very much, my honorable minister. Network just pushed me out of the whole team. Thank you for bringing me back.
Welcome.
Next item is welcome under agreement of integrity by Honorable Ema Diva. Letting go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, good morning from my side, the great men and women of Biafra. My name is Honorable Eman Bifen, Deputy Rap, Asian Middle East and also Indian Ademin and also from Amambala State. I welcome our indomitable leader, any person of His Excellency, Chief Ogeshukwu Nkere. Mazie, your people highly welcomed you and your entourage and all the brigay, cabinet and all the media teams. We welcome you people today in northern region of Biafra in this our noble town hall meeting today. We welcome you especially our APM because we already know that you are a great man for what you have been doing for Biafran, not letting these chips sink even when the enemy thought that they have succeeded. Your resilient spirit gives us hope that what Mazie, Namdekanu, our spirit has said, that even in a thousand years that the enemy will never destroy this struggle. It gives us hope that shows that that is true and that is right. Thank you so much, sir, for the great job you are doing for Biafrans and as much as I'm welcoming. Also, our media juggernaut, Oko Kondem of our time, the Minister of Media and Information, Honorable Sonny Aparawa and all the media teams. I will be mentioning your names one after the other. I will be mentioning your name one by one. We welcome you all today in northern region of Biafra. We say thank you for all the good job you have been doing, keeping Biafra alive in media. Do not allow enemy to take over the media space for us. You fight truth and there. Sometimes I ask myself, how are you managed to sleep even to take care of one or two things, your personal needs? Being always on the air, keeping the struggle alive. We say bless each and every one of you. Also, we welcome all the great men and women, the Ademis, the Raps across the world that is here present. We say, "Mishiko Kabianma", bless you all. We also welcome all the solar administrators from different regions in the Biafra land. We welcome each and every one of you. We thank you for being here in this cause that we all have accepted to fight the end. I say, "Mishiko Kabianma", bless each and every one of you. I cannot end without welcoming our great man, the one, the shoulder that have lifted the weight of all that enemy have been putting on our people in homeland. We welcome you especially, sir, honorable sources and all the cabinet members in homeland, starting from our Minister of Finance, the COA, I think so that, the ECOYAL and all the national administrators and all the regional heads in homeland welcome you in this event. We also thank and welcome our armies, our men on ground, people that said no, they can never be alive to see the enemy take over our land. We welcome you and we continue praying for you every day. That whatsoever that the plan of enemy, that God will hand them over to you and you will destroy them. I thank all the Biafrans here, the lovers of freedom, the well wishers that love the cause of freedom. We welcome you all in northern region of Biafra today in this our noble meeting. We say, "Mishiko Kabianma", thank you for making up your time to answer this crowded call today. Thank you and God bless all of you. Deewon.
Deewo. Thank you very much, Honorable Ema Diva. You have done justice to the welcome and agreement. Thank you very much, our indomitable APM. You are welcome. Next thing in our agenda is the breaking presentation of cola nodes. Could you please, my honorable Minister Sonny, present us the cola symbolically so that our brother can now break the cola for us? Thank you. Did you hear me, Minister of Information? Could you please... Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes.
What are you doing?
Mazie, you're talking. I'm not talking.
Okay. Uh, Deewon, what are you doing? I'm not talking.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Deewon, what are you doing? Uh, what are you doing? Uh, Deputy Ademene Fakesten. What are you doing? I'm not talking. I'm not talking. I'm not talking. I'm not talking. What are you doing? I'm not talking. 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 So, on behalf of northern region or the northern region of Biafran, I, George, welcome our acting Prime Minister, Excellency Chief Ogeshukwu Nkere and his cabinet and all the party United States of Biafra and the well wishers of Biafra on behalf of northern region, I, George, am not talking. Uh, not to be arguing. I, George, am not talking. Chukwe Kabianma, I'm not talking. 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 Oh, we're in Biafran. I'm not talking. I'm not talking. All the northern regions. When I welcome all the Biafrans, I'm not talking. When I welcome our acting Prime Minister and his cabinet and all the Biafrans, I'm not talking. 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 All the four corners of the world, I'm not talking. 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 Freedom. I'm not talking. I'm not talking. I'm not talking. I'm not talking. Oh, Biafra. I, George, I'm not talking. I'm not talking. When I went to our government, I'm not talking. Our active Prime Minister, our government, yeah. When I went to Monandine, I'm not talking. Our honorable, our representative, oh, we're in Biafran. I'm not talking. I'm not talking. If I'm not talking, I'm not talking. 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 In all the northern region, I'm not talking. 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 I'm not talking.[1708.92] I am here. When I am here.
Okay. I am here.
I am here. I am here.
I am here.
I am here. I am here. When I am not sure. We are here. We are here. When I am not sure, no voting. We are here. We are here. We are here. I am here. Come, we are here. You can get you. When I am here, I am here. 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 We are here. I am here. I am here. Biafra, I am here. 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 I am here.
He said. He said. He said.
He said.
He said.
Logic, I am here. No, we are here. Oh, Biafra, no, no.
No.
Okay, okay. I am here. When I am here. 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 We are here. I am here. I am here. Freedom, we are here. I am here. When I am here, I am here. I am here. I am here.
He said. He said.
He said. I am here. I am here. When I am here, I am here. I am here. I am here. I am here. When I am here, I am here. I am here. When I am here, I am here. 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 When I am here, I am here.
He said. He said. He said.
Uh, I am here. Our APM. You can. We are here. Oh, Biafra, we are here. Uh. My brothers and sisters, Northern Region. Well wishers of Biafra. We are here. Uh, we are here. We are here. We are here. We are here.
No, no. No.
The floor is open right now for us to pick colors. Individuals and collectively. You should come and pick color. And also welcome our APM with something. They won.
Uh, they were, Mazze. Uh, the regional head, I think you could have, you're calling them state by state in your region. From there, after general, right?
Okay, okay. And they will. Uh, I call upon. The Alanso. Which is one of the states in the Northern Region. To come and pick color. Alanso. Pick color and welcome our APM.
This meeting is being recorded.
It's my best form there. You expected to pick color. And welcome our APM.
Are you calling another state?
Why waiting for Alanso to get prepared to figure a cooler? I hereby call upon the Zan State. To pick color. And welcome my APM.
Hello. Yeah, so can you hear me?
We are here. We are hearing you.
Yeah, so thank you very much, everyone. And I'm very happy to be here. And I want to thank. Our honorable APM. Mazzyugin Kere, our information minister Mazzya, but our day. All our leaders. Um, our great leader Mazze Namdekan, our PM Mazze Simon Ema. They want to thank you very much all. And. Start talking too much. Uh, just want to. Uh, greet everyone that's here. And we from Azan States, we've been trying to. Host our town hall meeting for a while now. But each time we try to do that. Something happens, so a lot of people may not know so much about us. Uh, the first time, even when PM was here. We tried to. Host our town hall. And then Ungazi struck. And we had to reorganize and put ourselves together again. And just when we're again ready to do that, the accountability group also struck, so. And so, right now, we're still putting ourselves together. Again, so just a brief history about us. Uh. Azan was carved out from the state of Enugu, Old Enugu. And we are bothered by. Alanso, the north. Uh, Ibube, the capital. Then he came back on the west. And. And then Nugu on the east side of Azan State. And I'm not going to go into so much detail, but one significant thing about us is. You know how some people say that. Uh, we are from Israel, some other people said we are not from Israel. If you come to Azan State. There's a particular place called Udi. If you go there, you will find some pyramids there. Just like the ones that you see in Egypt. So my question to the people that say we are not Israelites. Can you please explain what those pyramids are doing there and who built it? So that's all I'm going to say for now. And when we have our town hall meeting, we have a lot of history. We talked to Biafra about the state of Azan. So today. Uh, Azan State. Pick color with half a million agent. They won.
Dalo, dalo. Don't leave me.
Thank you, thank you. Akamarama kaiga koru when I walk.
You can, dalo, uno waaka, uno waaka, you see, Nikke, you see, Nikke.
Thank you. I just wanted you to.
I was going.
Yeah, thank you. But I will come officially soon.
It is very, thank you.
Okay.
Dalo.
Uh, we are here. Our honorable Information Minister. And our APM. His SLC and his cabinet. I am not sure. They were here. We could have 20,000 AJ. When I support. Uh, Azan State. They were here.
They were, they were, dalo. Akamarama kaiga koru Pakistanu. Dalo for your support. You go, Gazeke.
Hello, are you hearing me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, my brothers and sisters. Well, I'm happy to be part of this program this night. And I also, I'm from Azan State. And. For a long time, I'm using 5,000 AJ to support my people from the homeland. Thank you, God bless you all. I'll send my receipt to my domain right now.
Thank you.
Akamarama kaiga koru when I walk. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. We have actually done our Azan donation, but I'm welcoming my APM to my state. With 30,000 AJ. He gave to my people, Azan. He gave to you. And I'm.
They were, honorable Betty, dalo.
Thank you.
Akamarama kaiga koru Pakistanu. Betty, thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
They were.
I've been trying to, I've been trying to unmute myself, but it's not allowed. Uh, Minister of Information, please go host me. Networkers slap me out of the system. So you know, you hosted me before. Yeah, uh, greeted to. My honorable APM. APM, give good evening. I welcome you to. Northern Region. Of United States of Biafra. I welcome all the Brighi cabinet. Thank you for being with us today. Uh, Mazze, Sonia, Brawa, Information Minister. Thank you. Our APM, special greeting. Special greeting. Uh, we are proud of you. Especially. On the days of fighting for the freedom of Biafra. Whenever we remember you. We'll be proud of fighting for the freedom of Biafra. You are seeing what you are doing. You have taken us to. United States of America. Which our leader Mazze Namdekan said that America must recognize us. Without going there, America would not know our problem. You have done it. Thank you so much. I'm picking color with the sum of. 20,000 AJ. And I think, let me use this opportunity to call out the donor. In my state. Yeah. I myself. A before my admin of Alanso State. 14,000 AJ. Uh, a former deputy. 6,000 AJ. Mazze Emeka. 7,000 AJ. Ikke Chukupita. 18,000 AJ. Ugutamosis. 4,000 AJ. Uguja Christover. 13,000 AJ. Namdi Sunday. 6,000 AJ. Ugu Shadrak. 12,000 AJ. IK County German. 18,000 AJ. Mazze Sylvester. 2,000 AJ. Mazze Ojobo Chinedu. 15,000 AJ. Ansalan Chinedu. 5,000 AJ. Asogwa Fidelis. 7,000 AJ. Ezemus. 3,000 AJ. John Anguke. 6,000 AJ. Atapita. 12,000 AJ. Mazze IK Zema 3,000 AJ. Ezemus. Sebastian 3,000 AJ. Anetche Chuku. Omajé 10,000 AJ. Ugu Shadrak 7,000 AJ. Wadastelo Memma 4,000 AJ. Ofwayjofo 7,000 AJ. Ikke Dibokristian 6,000 AJ. Rama John Paul 10,000 AJ. Omajé Angela 1,000 AJ. Ugu Chuku. Asogwa. 1,000 AJ. Iyokkennet 1,000 AJ. Okarfor Dominic 1,000 AJ. Obeta Helen 1,000 AJ. Ugwani Martin 1,000 AJ. Uguja Mabe 1,000 AJ. Uguja Filimon 1,000 AJ. Uguke Gaybat 1,000 AJ. John Paul. John Alfred 1,000 AJ. Jude Chika 10,000 AJ. Martin. Matthias. Chukwebuka. Almona 2,000 AJ. Victor. Chinweke. 1,005 AJ. Udaya Chris 2,000 AJ. Ofosinko. 2,000 AJ. In Alanso, we have the total of. 245,000 AJ. Thank you so much.
Akamarama kaiga koru. Alanso, thank you. I hope I got it right. Yeah, thank you. God bless you.
Hello.
No.
I have, I have an update.
Go ahead.
Mazze Wisdom from Azan State. Is supporting. With 10,000, supporting APM and his cabinet with 10,000, 10,000 AJ. They won.
Okay. They won. They won. You sing for him.
So that brings Azan. Um. Well, okay, well, never mind.
To how much?
Um, there are so many other ones we need to add up anyway, so I'll, I'll come back later.
30,000 AJ. Plus 10,000 AJ. 30,000. From Madame Betty. I have 10,000 from Wisdom. 5,000 from. Five thousand from Amma.
So that would be five hundred and forty-five thousand.
Okay, twenty thousand from Chidok.
Okay, sorry. And forty thousand from me, please. From, from Ukki, from Madame Ukki.
Oh wow, thank you so much, Madame Ukki.
We have to sing for her.
Ah wait, Madame Betty, I'm coming, Minister Betty. Ah from Okay, that's fifty thousand total. Fifty thousand. Okay, Mazzi Chidok, okay, okay, fifty thousand AJ. Mazzi Wisdom, ten thousand AJ. Minister Betty, Minister Betty, thirty thousand AJ. Amma, five thousand AJ. Madame Ukki, forty thousand AJ.
The thing was Thank you.
Kelly. Okay. Are we going to sing for him?
Mm-hmm, of course. And let's go ahead.
Wisdom, Mazzi Wisdom, Mazzi Wisdom, Mazzi Wisdom, 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 not Kelly.
Okay.
Wisdom, okay.
Time to do it again. Thank you, Wisdom.
Six hundred and thirty-five thousand AJ from
Oh wow.
Six hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Any further support? They won't know. What even ever. Darun. In fact, I don't know how to express the joy in my heart, oh. Honestly. Almighty God will keep blessing every one of us. Our APM, we welcome you in our region. You are highly know. Mazzi Sonne, you are highly know. All the cabinet members, but everyone, you are highly know. And without wasting time, because I'm supporting my state once again with three thousand AJ. Three thousand AJ, Ezaani State.
Yes, so.
I'm supporting my state with three thousand AJ. So Brother Kelly, you will hear from me again.
Okay.
Okay, Mazzi, ndewo, ndewo, yeah, ndewo, Mazzi Chukud, ndewo.
I'll, I'll, I'll get back to you, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, let, let the fire keep on burning. If there is, if, if there is no other support for Ezaani, I call upon the Habeni. Habeni Administrator should come and say something, pick the cola and support our APM visit. If the admin of Habeni is not there, there is a representative, I saw there, one Alice. If he delegated you, you say something. If there are no forthcoming, then I can call upon another state. Is Habeni coming? Or Habeni State? While waiting for Habeni, I call upon Omambala State. It behooves on me as the Northern Region Head, also the Administrator of Omambala State. I want to welcome our APM and to break the cola with the sum of four hundred thousand from Omambala State.
Yes, so.
Four hundred AJ.
AJ, yeah.
Okay, four hundred AJ, oh, okay.
Four hundred thousand AJ.
Hmm, have you finished? So we can sing for you.
Yes, you can sing while other ones are coming. I have a lot of supports.
Yes, so. We're waiting for you people, we still make donations for you people.
Um, as the admin of Omambala State and the regional head of Northern State, not, not, Northern Region, sorry, I am welcoming our APM and the breaking of the cola with forty thousand.
Wow.
Okay.
Yes, so. Thank you. That was great.
I enunciate upon Omambala people to come and support.
Yeah. I welcome my APM, His Excellency Chief Ogichun Kere and all the all the Biafrans here today in this great meeting. And you know, as you all know, I'm from Omambala. There is nothing will happen, the Omambala name will not be answered, we must try our best to answer the name of our state.
Yes, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Our our singer, our grateful mother giving us your lovely voice, honestly, I love that voice, I teach you for your effort, you are wasting time. I welcome all of you, I'm picking this color with the sum of hundred thousand AJ.
So.
And I want to call all my friends that I invited, Mazzi Tula Delboni and colleagues, all of you, everybody please, this is time for Omambala, rise and support Omambala for we are one blood. They won.
Yes, so. Yes, I add, um, to support.
Please. It's how much you mentioned, I didn't hear very well.
Hundred thousand, hundred thousand AJ.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you.
Yeah, please, if you are recording, add thirty thousand from Madame Ukki. Yeah, I'll compile all of them and pay this night. Sorry, this fundraising.
My second one.
Second one. They won. They won. The seventy thousand now, plus my two seventy, I'll pay all of them today. One over.
Uh, Amma coming now?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, okay, okay. Uh, good evening, my minister in the house. Uh, first of all, I'd like to my honorable APM Mazo Gichun Kere and our Information Minister Maz Sonat Brawa and all the cabinet members. I welcome each one, every one of you. I said, they were. And also, listening to my admin Omambala Administrator and my fellow Omambala State, Omambala citizens and all Biafrans all over the world. Uh, without wasting time, I am welcoming the APM and his cabinet member with some of twenty thousand AJ. And I'm picking the color with some of twenty thousand AJ, that is forty thousand AJ.
Thank you so much. They will. Alright. Yeah, you can bring down your hand now.
There any other support for Omambala? If not, then we go back to Habeni.
Hands up.
No, no, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, sir. Oh, he needs to be, he needs no, so. Okay, no, no, you cannot mute now. Let's unmute, yeah. Emeka, you can now mute as well, you, 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 you are also. Anyone can unmute.
They won't.
Hey, what?
Yes.
Am I coming? You can go later and we'll come, we'll come in, go ahead.
Alright. Okay. Oh, no, 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 I've removed the call. Okay. Oh, he's back. Emeka, go ahead.
Greetings, Biafrans.
Welcome.
Greetings, our APM, Excellency Ogichun Kere. Greetings, our Information Minister, Sonia Brawa, the indomitable leader. Greetings, all cabinet members. We appreciate you and thank you for the good job you are doing for us. At least we are seeing your hand work in Washington because there is zoo torerists that are running at us, getting crying like a today's baby babbo baby. Looking for who will help but they are not going to see anybody. We appreciate you, may the God Almighty give you more strength to you too. Our leader said that it's going to zoo, but I allow APM said that the nap, I tell you about, but I allow our, our APM, I pass the one, but I allow front and back. Um, I make up from from Omambala State. I am picking a cola with ten thousand AJ. And so welcome our APM with ten thousand AJ. Thank you all.
Take care, Emeka. Akamarama kaigakuro meka banyo. Akamarama oh. Thank you so much, Jamaica, for the thirteen thousand. Bless you. Alright. Hey.
S- sorry, I came back a bit. I'll give me money through admin of Omambala state, please.
Hmm. Okay, huh?
Emmy is in a zoo land, not in the Aspera.
Okay.
So he can remit it through, yes.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Okay, no, you can go ahead if you're muted.
Okay, yeah, I have an update. Mazetoni Aladdin Bunny is supporting Omambala people with fifty a gemma. Mazetoni Aladdin. Uh, no. No, I said Mazetoni Aladdin Bunny is, is supporting Omambala people with fifty a gemma, that's what I said. Yeah.
Omobani ni ba ra ma oh. Um ba ba. Omobani ni ba ra ma oh. Um ba ba. No ye chi me reze, nama dra po he na yo. Oh yo yo.
That, that let you go, Zegi.
Thank you.
They were. All lovers of freedom. You have to say.
No, no.
Good evening, Ma, good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
So without wasting much of our time. Uh. Well, I'm going to support uh, Umbra with uh, Umbra with uh, the sum of. Uh, twenty thousand a J, I'll remit it through uh, Lagos live zone. Thank you.
Dar, no, sir, no.
Thank you, no, sir.
Go Zegi.
Akamarama kaigakuro mano banyo. Akamarama oh. Also, dar, darlo in there. Thank you.
Regal.
Okay, Jack. Good evening, for our Biafrans.
Good evening.
Um.
But.
From what we state, uh. I'm supporting. Northern region, tonight with five thousand.
So.
They were.
They were.
God bless you, Tukadibia.
Tukadibia. Akamarama kaigakuro Tukak, Tukakadibia oh.
Did not be so mad fool, is it?
Yes, sir, Tukadibia.
Oh my god.
Tukawama. Okay.
Alright, and they want to. He was trying to, trying to take you guys back, um. Some of our contributors from Esan, they complained that they didn't hear their name. Because I just called the total amount, so please, if you guys can permit me, let me mention their names real quick. So I have, um. Jaiké Omeziye, twenty thousand. A J. Arizé Victor. Seven thousand a J. Wada Didi Stella, ten thousand a J. Mazie Tuko Di Christian, two thousand a J. Honorable Betty. Forty thousand a J. Mazie Chinazep. Ten thousand a J. Wada Stella Sample. Thirty thousand a J. Mazie Emmanuel. Seventy five thousand a J. And myself, uh, Mize. Three hundred and six thousand a J. They won.
They were.
Hmm.
Okay.
This is your sum total.
At the initial total that I mentioned when I said happening on edge. Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, okay, alright.
Yes.
Uh, for Omambala state, we have total of seven hundred and twenty thousand a J. Total for Omambala so far, seven twenty.
Yeah, for Esan, we have six hundred and thirty eight thousand a J. We are coming up, yeah.
Don't worry, I'll help you people, yeah, Omambala, Omambala, my million.
Hmm.
I don't care for my state to Esan. Support of Esan. Where is two thousand?
Om, Om, Omambala has been winning right from the time from B L T, the forty days, so. If we win, still win now, there's nothing wrong in it. Omambala, that's the origin, origin of the state. Yes. And we. Don't, don't. Don't matter.
The state is just.
No problem.
It's just hurting. Esan is there.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. And we appreciate that, and after, for the past two months, I've been doing marvelously good, I've been remitting something. It's very encouraging, keep it up.
Well. Ma, 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 sorry, ma. Ma, ma, sorry, don't worry, one of them will win it, I think I would drag us, we'll go, just I read that, fish for you. With under the young.
How much is Omam, Omambala now? Seven what?
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty. Seven twenty.
Okay, okay, let's make Esani seven sixty now, for now.
Hey.
Then do the, then do the uh, minus one. Addition for me, please.
Uh, hey. How much? Good, how much? That will never.
Esan, make up to seven sixty and give me the calculation.
Seven sixty.
And, and, go and pay it.
Okay, yes, I'm doing that.
More, more are still coming. More are still coming, we appreciate that. Uh, keep it up. While waiting for more support, let us uh, hear from or have any, while waiting for more support from others, please. Let our Beany do something, we need them to bring the cooler. Thank you.
Here is hundred and twenty two thousand a J.
Okay, no problem.
Make it seven sixty.
Add it to me, it's alright.
Thank you so much, may God bless you.
Let's see, too. I'll pay everything together. Hmm. Including Omambala one. Mkiro ni ya ni ma oh. Ni ma oh. Um ba ba. Mkiro ka ni ya ni ma oh. Um ba ba. No ye chi me reze. Mama na po he. Oh yo yo. Yes, sir.
They were.
They were minister, eighty one number. Okay, one thirty two, support. Okay, for you.
Thank you. Thank you, good evening, great Biafrans.
Yes, sir.
Great things. I welcome. Our A P M, I welcome. Our government. Biafra. Big government. Umbe Doma. I greet all the Biafrans. Genuine citizens. And indigenous people. Of northern region and Biafra as whole. Yeah, on behalf of uh, of Habeni state. I want to. Speak. As. A citizen. Of Biafra. Yes. Our, my state. Admin. Yes, he, we have been talking. But in our Habeni state. Right from the one, I can remember how many time. Even before the event of uh, the enemy. Event of the enemy, I have been talking about or Habeni. That uh. That's the enemy want hijack or Habeni. So, the, there's problem in our Haben, that is what I, I'm presenting. To our government. Biafra free government, yeah. Because uh. Even my county. In the Bay County, we have been doing well. But the, the, the charm of a. Yes. Uh. Yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you so much, yes, uh. Okay. Uh. I greet all Biafrans, I thank. Our A P M. I heard your cry. When you, when you say that. The whole region, this is the people you see. Yes, it's so painful. Even we, the genuine ones, when we see what is going on, it's so painful. The people that you are fighting for, they feel no concern. Why the nation we are fighting to restore, it belongs to all of us. So we must be strong, I greet all the Biafrans. Because what make us a nation is the fund. That we are funding. To make sure that we are functioning very well. So on behalf of uh, of Habeni state. We are donating fifty thousand, fifty thousand a J. The admin of the state donated three thousand a J. From a Bay County, we have forty seven thousand a J. So thank you so much, I appreciate. All Biafrans. All the genuine ones, and we must continue, because we have no choice. Those who are giving us, thank you, those who are giving us excuse, one excuse, one reason and the other.
Yeah.
For them not to be. Doing the needful things, if we all should be given excuse, what should be our faith, the faith of our loved ones? Who we have in Biafra land.
Yeah.
And we that we are in Ezai, what will be our faith? Because if our land is be taken, we are now a rabbit meat in Ezai. But it's so painful that these people, they don't really understand. Thank you so much, I welcome all Biafrans. In northern region of Biafra land, I appreciate all our efforts. Thanks to our acting prime minister, yes. Support you, that vessel. Any day you want us to lead you home, we are ready, we are ready, we can never surrender for the enemy.
Yeah.
Yes, that is my cause, thank you.
That's very good, God bless you. God bless you, God bless you. Okay. Akamarama kaigakuro. Abueni state yo. Akamarama oh. Thank you.
Beany, thank you, don't lose hope.
Amen, man. Yes. Yeah. Beautiful.
I'm ready, I'm ready sir, just that eh, a very quick one. Yeah, just want to add to what I just contributed earlier eh making it 50,000 AJ. And it will be remitted to Lagos liaison, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, which state?
Oh. Now, so far which state?
It cannot, okay, thank you. Eh like, for me, I'm from, I'm from Olu State, but I'm supporting Amambala State, that's, thank you very much.
Hey, oh, hmm, okay.
Yeah, my support goes to Amambala, I mean, I'm from Olu, but I'm supporting Amambala.
I'll, I'll add one more to Ezani, add 15,000, add 50,000 there.
Hey, awesome, awesome, awesome. I'm from Madamunki.
Okay. I go to all of Mago Sondaba. I go to Sondaba, I go to to thank, I go to to Betty. Um, I mean, envy, I'm free man, the Tarlo. United Kingdom, right? And more especially our APM, any of you, I go to. I don't want to say much on this, I have already called my COA, but I couldn't reach you. I expected him to make donation, but since I couldn't eh reach you, I decided to to say it myself. So eh yesterday, a lot of this hour, I have not been able to be on the care of fundraising, cost of some reason. So but God is so kind, I am a little bit relieved now. So I just sent 40,000 now to to our admin. So I expected that money to be for my fundraising yesterday. And it's together with the repatriate. Okay, 10,000 out of it, I'm using it to support the Northern Fundraising. Thank you, oh God bless, I've already know the transaction, I forward the receipt for you.
Yes sir, Miriaman. Okay. Miriaman ni danyimao. Thank you, Miriaman, na.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, thank you Mazisani, Mazisani please go host me again, they talk, push me out and I come back. Eh, thank you, I have an update here with me. Eh first of all, our the friends of Amambala, the great friend of Amambala, eh in the person of Mazitoni Aladimbuni. Eh give us 50 AJ before, added another 50 AJ to Amambala people. Make it 100 AJ man now. From Mazitoni Aladimbuni and eh from Mazitoni Aniwata. 20,000 AJ. To the O Mambala people. 50 AJ added and the 20,000 AJ. 50 AJ, 50 AJ from Mazitoni Aladimbuni and the 20,000 AJ from Mazitoni Chimeleum Aniwata.
For Mambala?
Yes, for Mambala.
Okay.
But I take the, I am in, we did, we know the shake.
Okay, Ezani State. Ezani State. I'm ready, I'm ready for the other one. Ezani State.
We are moving, we are moving.
Ezani, Minister Betty, go and record 150 pounds for Ezani State.
150 pounds, wow.
Oh, thank you, God bless you.
God bless.
I will read them.
They were.
I am so sorry, I am so sorry.
Very smooth pick.
Really?
Yes, my general challenge will not hold today. Because they are doing very well, they do very well already.
Yes sir.
Ma- Madam, Madam Monkey, you just eh single Doma Mambala out. You just single Doma Mambala to challenge us today.
What happened, yeah? Well, if you say, if you say that, I go from Kirin, 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 you know that, but I don't want to be selfish. Passion, she doesn't want to be passionate, otherwise we pick Ezani State. Otherwise I pick a general one and you challenge me.
Eh my, my
Well, why can't, why can't that be said on neutral and then they support it, they challenge it?
Hmm.
Sonia.
Which one are they, which ones are they, which ones are they?
Egala, Adoka, Ogoga.
Right.
These are three prominent states that we don't have solar administrator for now. We are still working on them. So you can support for those areas. This is a major area. Yes sir, they no, they just nasty Enugu from us.
Why, why she does that, why?
The saga of eh, the saga of eh Professor Chio Manco, one of the others. Yeah, make a, which is his name, who was the administrator. He was a big motor, so he messed up in Enugu, we had to sack him. So for now, we are still looking for somebody who can challenge him in Enugu.
The Lord is looking, the Lord brings it. The Lord brings it.
But
Okay.
Sorry, I have a, I have a question, eh, um, my honourable information, please. Okay, but we can, okay, but we can put money on those states, one after the other?
Of, of course, of course, of course.
But who will get it, who will, who will, who will get the money?
I am the Northern, I am the Northern Region Head. If you pay to me or we give your account, we, we pass the money to national, yeah?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, that's fine.
Ezani normally does, I think Ezani pass through me to the nation and I give you receipt one time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go on.
Okay, that's fine, when the time comes. I'll just pick two states, yeah.
Okay eh eh Sonia, am I allowed to talk? Okay, thanks so much for sharing my APM and eh self information, Sonia. And eh other process observe, greeting all the eh regional heads and eh citizens in under this eh region. Eh we eh, we are so much happy for great achievement. Eh we have showed eh how we are going to progress. And eh every other regions have watched it and seen eh by next month now, eh some region is going to pick their own, eastern is warming up, north also is warming up. And eh listening, where they are calling admin of eh, of Habeini. Eh if to recall, we don't want such a things that happen during your town hall meeting to repeat again. If you are here and you didn't appear in this town hall meeting, count yourself off. And any citizens that in this town hall meeting will be our witness that we say this. So O Habeini Admin, if you are here and you are not standing, are not replying, count yourself off, we are not going to condone it. And based on other states that eh we see that there is no admin, we have people in that place, but not something that will rush. We are monitoring activities of anyone before we approve anybody. What happened before will not happen again, it's a promise, it's not a threat.
Yes sir.
So what will not happen again, nobody going to recommend admin. So it is a heavy race and we will reach them. So all the in these regions, you guys are doing well and you guys must keep on doing great things. And do not allow devil to enter inside you because we will not contain the spirit of evil. So I, every citizens in every states, even if your admin is not appear here, please identify yourself in that eh states. It will add value in that states. So that you don't have admin in that place does not mean we don't have people that work in there. But we are carefully watching before we approve anyone. Thank you so much and keep on doing a good work. The eastern region is warming up for their own. And not also centralized, one up for their own, very recent donations, very public. Thank you so much and God bless us.
Can we go to the rest, the agenda? Maybe start.
Their hands raised.
I'm in hand up.
Please, they are
Okay, okay, sorry, sorry, okay. Am I coming out?
Yes.
Yeah. I am a maker from, from Ombambala State. I'm supporting Ombambala with some of 30, eh 30,000 AJ, thank you.
Yes sir.
Is it added to the 20 before, 30 added to 20 before, may we know? Yes. Yes, that is 50,000 AJ.
Okay.
Great beer France.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening, our APM. Good evening to our indefensible, indefensible prime and honourable self information Sonia Barawa. May rain, may your God help you, may God bless you, may God give strength and for you, as what you are doing, what is it.
Yes sir.
Everyone of us here. Well, I don't know if our people from eh Ombambala State has spoken. Eh it's because of eh life issue, though I have a power bank. So I'm supporting Northern Region with 5,000 AJ. I'm deputy admin from Ombambala State, they won.
They won.
I'm gonna no be called. Thank you so.
There one.
Good evening, our honorable self information, Marzoni Barawa. Good evening, our Prime Minister Nandi Kano, giving our Prime Minister some, our APM, Ombambala. I'll be supporting Ombambala State. Marzi, Chizora, is supporting the sum with, the sum of ten thousand AJ. And I myself, Vincent, supporting with three thousand AJ. We move, Marzoni Nandi, some of us be free.
Hmm.
Let's think for him.
It's Vincent.
Oh Vincent, oh Vin, alright. Thank you, oh, my brother.
Which state is he supporting? Is he just, uh, not yet?
Ombambala State.
Okay.
Ombambala State.
Okay.
Okay.
On behalf of, alright, on behalf of APM. Okay. That's fine.
There one, no. There wasn't mine. I'll be have of eh Ogogja. I'm from, I'm supporting Ogogja to stay with a hundred thousand AJ. Oh.
I don't know.
There the one, no. Anyoma. There one. Us. Wow, okay. Thank you.
Uh, greetings everybody. I greet you as a minister of information. I greet you, all the senior citizens, all the honoreables, all the ministers, I greet everybody. Just eh adding to, whether America, supporting her with the two thousand AJ from Ombambala State. Thank you.
And.
Thank you, I diallo. Thank you. Friend will go through.
There was a friend. Dear France, there one, no.
There one.
There one.
Yes, sir. Um.
You know, we have, have some states.
Mm-hmm.
That need encouragement to come out.
Hmm.
We need to consider their emotional status and their physical environment. And how they have been isolated for many, 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 many years.
Hmm.
So, it's a little bit unnerving for them to jump into the ring. So, we need to encourage them. On that note, I've decided to encourage Egala. Ogogja and eh Adoka.
And eh Adoka.
Someone comes, I'm probably, nothing more than that. Somebody's thing is open, it's echoing. So, what I'm saying is this. You guys have been hijacked, gerrymandered.
Hmm.
To places that you don't belong. You guys are like children born in exile. So, I don't expect them to jump into the ring with two legs. So, I am encouraging them. We are your people. Come back home, come out. Nothing make. Okay? We are here. The big brothers and the big sisters are here to protect and guide you. We are not going to let you remain out there. So, I am encouraging these three states with fifty thousand five hundred AJ. And I don't know what APM is going to say, but I know he's gonna talk. So. I, in anticipation to what he's going to say. I'm putting twenty thousand AJ on that. And for our own twenty four century, okay, grand. Thank you. And saying thank you to you will cost me three thousand AJ. So, that will be a total of seventy-three thousand seven, five hundred AJ. And my sister Etta is supporting the Northern Region with thirty AJ.
Yes, sir.
All, all the receipts will be forwarded to information minister.
There one.
There one.
Dollar, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Etta, dollar.
Yeah.
Eh, I'm quite a tell.
Look, I could have ended in New York, who, 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 you know.
It's true.
I've cut it down, but you guys, uh, Kiru, I go say pretty, yes, and I your palabra.
Mm-hmm.
Etta, thank you, we love you.
Thank you, Etta.
Yeah.
Yeah, eh, I, I've come back again.
Hmm.
Eh, I, I love, I love you so much.
Hmm.
Eh, on behalf of Ombambala State, I'm supporting with ten thousand AJ. Was forty thousand, that is fifty thousand AJ.
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, one.
Thank you.
Now, only, only lose the call account, oh.
Eh, what's here?
It's true, it's true. We need to balance it. Because it's still early. It's true.
Yes, so, I mean, Ezani is the one million and thirty thousand AJ.
Eh eh.
If you bring that, if you bring that.
Wow.
Ezani is one million and thirty-five thousand AJ for now.
Hey. Wow.
I am ready.
Wow. Ezani. Ezani, I can't, I'm a little. Yes, sir. Come back again, come back again. Unfortunately, like. China has a big people. I know, I know, I know him very well.
Hmm.
Oh, eh, my information minister, good evening everyone. Good evening, Kiki. Good evening, official comfort. Good evening, our information minister. Good evening, our APM, our leader Masina Micalo, our etalekuno. Good evening, everyone, love of freedom. Please, for the Northern eh Region and the East eh Region, I don't give boom. You know, so that we not left out. So, I just want eh, for I don't give boom. Northern, ten thousand AJ ma, for the support for our APM, we're coming eh, Northern Region of eh, Bia France. Thank you very, very much, our information minister, receipt will come to you. Thank you.
Hmm.
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 Thank you. Thank you. Mary. Mary, thank you.
Hmm.
There one, thank you. No Mary. Hmm. Yeah. My friends, we'll be the mama, that. Yes. And what I'm seeing happening is encouraging me and the rest of people who are give us. Please, time is of the essence. I support everyone to get their freedom. We want to be free. Look at what is happening. I want to be praying for this particular march that is going on. All I wish is manamdekanu to come out from there. The Lord has heard the cry, the Lord has heard the prayer. Whatever power in the air and the sea that is holding their DSS from releasing manamdekanu, it shall be broken. It shall be broken, it shall be broken, let the people say, say.
Say.
It's broken.
Say.
Without wasting your time, those three um, the places that are, they said that are very slow, Egala. Eh, Ndok, not, Ka, Ndok.
Adoka.
Adoka, Ogogja, I give you two thousand. Give two thousand, this, and um. Okay, I'll come back again.
Alrights.
Hmm.
Okay, I think you are much, it's not to bring your voice very well. Okay.
Oh.
Yes, it's not at all, so sing louder.
Alright.
Thank you, you got a very nice voice. Thank you.
God bless you.
Hmm. I'm, I'm but I'm late. You don't matter.
Yeah, that's alright, you are here already.
Oh. Yes, so, I ain't a gun, you knew. Because I'm, yes, I, I heard one Ezani, Ezani talk. I, 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 I will be clapping hands for Ezani for coming out with ten, uh, at the ten thousand. Maybe I have already done mine first, but I have to clap for Ezani for coming out in a louder voice. With ten AJ.
Yes, sir. I go to give.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Stella.
Yes, so, I'mma, I'mma send there to eh Kevin Kelly.
Kevin Kelly.
Okay, Chris.
Okay.
Yeah. There one, there one, why that Stella, there one.
There one. Yes, sir. Ouch. Hey. Ouch. We have to pay for that, oh, ah, ah. Ouch, ouch. Thank you, you see me, no.
Okay, I'm, I'm here.
Not remind anybody to overtake us, oh.
Okay.
Tonight, hey, we are ready. Ah, it's a market again. Which two, Ezani the challenge, which one?
Ezani and Ombambala.
Ah, ah, Kiru, Kiru, yeah, I'm the Ombambala too. Mki, where are you?
I'm in Ezani.
Which one? You're challenging Ombambala. Mm-hmm. You're challenging uh, Ombambala, is it?
Yes.
Eh, two against one is not a fair deal. Love, hold on now.
Well, now. Life is like that. Now.
But, love, this is life, this is life. It's life, it's reality. If winner takes it all.
Mm-hmm.
But what is, what is difference, please? Mki, what is the difference, the challenge now?
It's like, um, fifty thousand, so. Yeah, I don't know how much, uh, for Ombambala.
Tell the difference now.
Ezani is in there, I'm calling five thousand.
Please.
Ezani is a million and forty-five thousand AJ, that's what I have so. But I'm not, I don't know about Ombambala. But I'm not, I don't know about Omambele. Omambele, Omambele, Omambele is here. I can quickly. The, the, the. You see eh. My finan director, I don't know whether he's taking the. Eh, eh, hey, I don't know whether he's taking. Maybe I give you a rock.
What, what they do?
It's a total of eight, 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 eight hundred. And then Azan is stopping. Hmm, I can see.
Well, that's not what can rescue you. That's too far away.
You got it, it's a little nengo.
In a long way, I'm with my brother. I don't know who is going to rescue Nyalara. Love, they have. Far away, but I. Actually, they.
My, my. See what I mean? So, you're not hearing? I take you, you know. The last one, not sure. Last one, I'm not sure, it's online then. My, how are you there?
I should do what, what is doing the recording?
Yeah, that is why I am. But I don't know what I.
They can come for the blues.
Let me only come, please.
Yeah, we don't want to lose there. Somebody, somebody push up. Love, intervening this, you have said, see what you're going to. Easy. Maybe if they lose. That will be that school fees. How to keep record? Like I heard them on that. That's true. Love, they are losing and they just don't want to say. Well, whether they say it or not, they are, they have decided to lose. For a fact that they cannot. Meet a figure. I gave you, I gave you Google.
No, I, I, I haven't added up. I just checked eh the ballot equivalent of a hundred and fifty pounds. Eh, and it gave me two hundred and ninety four thousand seven hundred and fifty.
No. No. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, I haven't added up. I'm still writing down the, the amount they gave individually. So I do add up it at the end of the program.
Well.
After, after we all go home.
I have given you nine hundred and twenty five thousand so far, nine hundred and twenty five thousand.
Thank you.
Uh, Azan is one million and forty five thousand.
Eh, the difference is not much, let somebody add it up.
Yes, me too.
That is an opening remark by the northern region heads. Oh, I don't know where to start. I must tell your people I am overwhelmed. I never planned that it will eh gather momentum like this. But I have to start from somewhere. We sincerely welcome your excellent presence. To this routine A P M's visit. We appreciate. Our supreme leader. Mazi Nando Hukano. Light of Africa. Who opened our eyes. To trace our roots. Are you hearing me?
Yes.
Can you? When the going get. When the going get tougher. Our supreme leader looked for a hundred men. Which Mas is Simon Eba zoomed fifty slots. But before then. Onyendu had asked us to listen to the messages of Eba. And follow him. That he is coming with new dimension. There we are. We appreciate you for your hard work. Resilience and commitment. At the point of the struggle. Mazi Simon Eba went in for national assignment. And he dropped the button. At this time. There was chaos. And self-imposed leader, self-imposed ruler. Emerged, but that did not go down well with us. Therefore. We searched for a true leader. That will take us to promised land. Then an elected A P M. In the person of Mazi Honorable Obitu Kure emerged. Today, he has taken the button. And led us to United States. We had a first ever congreg- congregational briefing was held. To talk about Biafra. We say thank you so much so far. However. In the course of trying to reorganize. The structure. Which Madame Ora Boufflani bow, bow, bow scattered. We were able to form five formidable regions. Of which northern region. That is hosting A P M today is one of them. The essence of primary aim of forming this region. Are as follows, one. To evangelize, sensitize and mobilize the people. To the grassroots. Two, to source or raise fund. For our B D F. Who are doing great in defending our lives and property. And territorial borders. The third one is to support. Politically, economically and diplomatic relations move. With the international community for recognition. At this joint show, we appreciate all the cabinet members. Continental reps, admins. Committee members. Had calls and supporters working assiduously. With our indefatigable A P M. In making sure that Biafra come in our time. We do our cap for our B D F who are doing wonderful job. In decimating the zoo terrorists. You can see that God is in our side. Seeing what is happening in the zoo. And how the entire world is coming out to see the truth. Which is an edge on our side. And as they say, when things or projects is getting tough and tougher. That is when it gets to an end. Therefore, we plead with us to support the project with all the necessary requirements to complete it. We cannot do without the Ajama and Ajah. One Ajah or two means a lot at this critical time. Therefore, we task ourselves to donate generously. To be free from slavery and marginalization. On this note, I want to thank all of you. Who deprived themselves of pleasure in their very zones. To be with us, to give us support. Because of the zeal you have to free yourself from slavery. I thank all of you and I appreciate you. Me Chuku Kikabiama continue to bless you. And bless our APM. Who is working tirelessly, tirelessly. To see that we enter a promised land in no distant time. Thank you and God bless you. Thank you very much. I am Mazi Honorable.
Thank you. Thank you.
There were. Yes, the next item is. Welcome address by Regional Secretary. Could you please, Regional Secretary, read your address? Maybe it's kicked out by network. We can go to other agenda.
Those who killed us built houses for those who burned. Our mothers sleep in sewage. Our churches still unturned. They call them reform fighters. We call them needless rage. We bury the baptized. They rebrand the greatest. Anytime we cry for help, they close us as stats and peace. But you can't plan hope on land where justice is deceased. The blood still speaks. In burning fields, in bocal smoke. In wars as hills. The blood still speaks. In Sunday shoes, still soaked in red. Inside the pews. The blood still speaks. From girl to god, from grave to sky. From ash to rock. They killed us slow, named it war. They blame it's right. They close the door. But we know truth. It bleeds and burns. It waits in wells. It always returns. So build your silence tall and proud. Our blood will pull it down out loud. The blood still speaks. The blood still roars. It takes the dome and breaks the floor. The blood still speaks. From every name you failed to say, still flames remain. The blood still speaks. Not for revenge, but for the king. The bitter end. Will not be this. Will not be shame. Will not be silent. Will not be blame. The blood still speaks. And it speaks your name. We are still here. We are not the end. We are the winners. The blood still speaks.
Thank you for your information. For those that don't know my name, my name is Ogechukwu Ngeri. The active Prime Minister of Biafra Public Government in Gaza. I choose this joint for reason. To free my people, to free Biafra people. For the love I have for humanity. Because Biafra life matter. Because Christians in Biafra land deserve to live. Yes, that is the fact. And we Biafran people cannot allow. This terrorist country called Nigeria. That have over 22 terrorist groups to overrun our land, kill us all. They are barbaric, they are evil, they don't care about humanity. Thank you for tuning in, both at home and abroad. Thank you. We appreciate our leaders, those before us. We always remember them. Because we have them in our good, good, good book. So if you want to be remembered, do what is right. Do what is right in the eyes of God who created you. Do what is right in the eyes of humanity. And let it show by walk, not by men saying it. We appreciate our leader Ogechukwu and our leader Philip Pheon. We also appreciate two of our leader, Mazi Nandohukano. Who was kidnapped from Kenya. Just for the same reason why we are fighting to free our people. He was kidnapped, not because he identify himself as in Nigeria. Not because he want to destroy Nigeria. Just because he ask for freedom for his people. Just because he want to be free. Just because he believe that Biafra life matters. He believe that Biafran people deserve to live a better life. Until the Nigerian terrorist state still held him in their detention, in their DSS. To the extent he was even prevented from getting proper medical treatment. This is part of the reason. We fight, we fight until we totally liberate our land. We cannot surrender. And if they think we are soft, we are quiet. Because we believe the Nigerian terrorist state, the money, our body language, they follow everything we do. They trying to find out how serious we are. Are we ready to fight? Or if anything happen to our leader Mazi Nandohukano, what we are going to do? It is a promise that we will help whole Nigeria terrorist government accountable. We might not have everything it takes to burn down that country in a second now. That don't mean that we won't find a way or won't be able to get the miss. Biafran people, we understand, they are stubborn people. That is a fact. And some of them are so scared because of terrorism. That this terrorist state of Nigeria with Islamic Jihad. This terrorist blood sucking demons, evil people. Are still in there. Biafran people, wake up! The Mungu know too much for how long. Will you watch them rape your doctor? Rape your mother? Chase your mother, your parents out of their fam- family? For how long would you watch them? Coming all these kinds of atrocities against your people? Just because your life today, it happen, it happen happen to you? Don't mean. Don't mean that it will not get to you. And remember. Whatever happen or affect your people. You feel the pain. Because some of you have been victim of these terrorist outs against you. Some of you have lost your family. Some of you houses have been burned down by this terrorist country called Nigeria. Some of you have lost your loved one. What are you waiting for? To start fighting? What are you waiting for? For to be a man that you supposed to be? Even our mothers, our sisters are stepping up. Doing what is right. We are the men in Biafran. I believe we Biafrans are not coward. Biafrans are smart, wise, hardworking, and strong as well. But how, why are we acting behaving like? Some of us are stupid? If you a true Biafran. If you love the nation. If you love your, if you love the injustice. If you don't love the injustice against your people. You know what to do. You know those that are bringing these terrorists to your land? If it is any of your family member, hold that person accountable. If it is the illegitimate governors parading the surface in Biafran, hold them accountable. Don't be a coward. I don't know if you don't break some of you heart. Seeing how this has started a young voice. Seeing how some Biafrans are running out of their village. Even looking for ID, can't even find. How do some of you sleep? The same reason how leader Mazi Nandohukano is fighting, is fighting today for our freedom. That same way our Prime Minister Mazi Simon Eba was fighting from abroad in Finland. He did exposition for over four years, exposing the Nigerian terrorist state and its atrocities. Through the exposition on the Biafran people. Embrace and welcome him. They love him so much, that is so attached to him spiritually, physically, otherwise, and emotionally. Have you all abandoned this witness? Have you all forgotten the teaching of Mazi Nandohukano? Have you all forgotten the exposition of Mazi Simon Eba? Atrocities, how do you think? Or how do you, how do you think that our leader Mazi Nandohukano, how he will feel? If you hear I'm fine and some of you are. If you hear I'm fine and some of you are if you find out some of you don't support this freedom anymore, wait in until it's released? If we all keep quiet and stop fighting, what do you think will happen? Do you think if we ask these terrorists to give us a break, timeout, that we are waiting until our leader Mazinamdekanu is out, then we start the fight? Or we start defending ourselves? Do you think that we listen to you? Why are you waiting until these leaders are relieved before you start doing what's right? Today, we're having a town hall meeting of Northern Region of Biafran. First of all, I wanna appreciate the defacto government for this initiative. And also appreciate all the admin and the deputies from this Northern Region states. But I also wanna use the opportunity to let them know about my displeasure and the Biafran people. First of all, we are not liberating Baltimore here in United States of America. We are not liberating Paris. And, uh, and you know, uh, we Biafran people really appreciate if Biafrans can please give in kindly support and let us get our satellite back. So while the grassroots, they are doing their job, we can also be able to through this satellite channel to reach more people in Biafran. Because we are liberating each Biafran land. We are not liberating UK, not Netherlands, not Germany. We are liberating Biafran land. We have two governments. The government in Eza, their job is to do whatever they can for our recognition. So we are battling the diplomatic war from Washington abroad here and over Europe as well. So Biafran can be recognized, so the world can hear our cry and hear know how we are fighting to free ourselves. And the government in homeland also have their own job to do. They need to stand up. They need to be more harder. This movement have getting to where we need men. Even women are doing their own. The Prime Minister of Italy happened to be a female. Around the world, women have position in different governments. Women are even fighting like men, even other than men. Even in Biafran struggle, we have a woman who is fighting against Biafran. And she is destroying, destroying a lot. The person by name goes up, please. We can also get a woman who fight genuinely and do what is right. Just like some we have from the Biafran Republic Government in Eza, one of our honorable Bishop Comfort. We have many of them. Our honorable Lo our honorable Naye honorable Yunis, honorable Tini. We have honorable Nkere to us. The name goes up, a big girl. These are women that have started up. We dey fight more than the men. And we also have some of these honorable ministers from the defacto government. But we are the men! The defacto government need to sit up. The Board of Convention is in homeland. We are liberating the homeland. Even without the breaking, Biafran Republic Government in Eza from Daspor, the homeland government supposed to be effective as well with results. We expect more mobilization going on. All the admin from the homeland with the Biafran Republic Government in Eza, of which I'm the acting Prime Minister, we encourage you, we endorse you, we give you our support to go to work. We know it's not going to be easy. It never, never going to be easy. If you don't fight, they will kill you. So it's better you fight to free yourself. I know, we know, there have been still fear or just fear in all of you. Get out of that bubble of fear. Some of you admin from homeland, we know your handicap, your hands are tied, you can't probably do anything from where you are. But there's always way out of every situation. You have to find a way. If you can't find a way, step aside. Let's get somebody who get the job done. The same problem that the government in homeland face. The government from Daspor also face that problem. But we find our way out. And you can see the result coming from Daspor. In every situation, there is always a way out. And when it get harder and tougher, your brain will work off like computer. You always find a way out of it. This is not time for asking reasons. And it's not time to look anybody's face or to kiss anybody else. Stand up! Fight for what you believe. Fight for your right. Or you step aside. So who look for who can get the job done. Biafran people have been killed in millions. See what today? Our family members have been killed every day. Some of them can't even close their eyes and sleep at night because of this terrorist country called Nigeria. Some of them are not saving their community. And somebody want to tell me I'm okay, see man, there is nothing like that. There is no time. Delay is dangerous. Whatever we know we gonna do tomorrow, we do it today. When these terrorists come to kill you, they don't ask you to take a break. They don't wait for you until you go and worship your god and come back, then they will resume the killing. They don't wait for you until you tell them it's time, it's ready, time to fight. They come to you every minute. When you are bed, when you are sleeping, it don't matter what time. Your freedom is in your hand. Those that have come to kill, they don't have the monopoly of violence. We have more right than they do. Because we are in our own God-given land. We are defending ourselves. We are not their aggressor, they are. Look at what is happening around the world. Just about a week ago, or less than a week ago, there is this peace agreement between the Israelites and the Hamas that govern the trip of Gaza. And what's going on today? I believe as I'm speaking, Hamas already broke the agreement. Do you know why? You don't treat cancer, you cut off cancer. Do you know the reason why? They are terrorists! They don't love peace. You can't coexist with them. They are the same group of people with the same ideology that are fighting against their Biafran people. You cannot coexist with this. It's black, they are the terrorists. Whether it's the Fulani husband, whether it's the Boko Haram, whether it's ISIS, ISIS up Nigeria terrorists, you can't coexist with them because we are not compatible. We are not the same people. We don't eat the same food, we don't eat the same language, we don't have the same ideology. We love Western way of life and civilization. They don't! Biafrans, we can be coming, yelling, complaining, whining every day. It's time we do what is right. And the time is now! Where KCM? We don't have time. Every state in Biafran land, the whole forty states must be proactive. You can't tell me that some state, you can't find one or two Biafrans to pilot the affair of the thousands and millions of Biafrans in that state. How long will that take before we can do that? What is going on that we lack mobilization? We lack action. We are not here to fight for our freedom forever. Yesterday was a fundraising. We have some way of meeting Biafran pioneers of this great movement. All who want to be free. Some country go, what they have, what they can, and they are here today again doing something. Don't you think at the time they will be tired? Are we waiting until when I will say they can no more or it's too much? We need to get our freedom now, now, now. And for some of you fools that till now you don't know who is fighting for you, I don't know what words to describe you as. Some of you, after seeing what Biafran Republic Government is doing, with the asking question, how dumb and stupid you are. I have a conversation with one of our patrons this morning. On the phone, I should let him know that out of hundred percent, all these people operating themselves, not just because you have the dialect, you speak Biafran language, that make you a Biafran. Over sixty percent are not Biafrans. Because Biafrans, I know, they love themselves. Biafrans that I know don't hurt life. Biafrans, I know. They love their fellow Biafrans. Biafrans, I know, cannot collude with the terrorist group to kill their own. Just for example, somebody like Hope, who is a man from killing people in Imo State, burning Biafran houses, destroying Biafran businesses, and you will tell me that Hope is a Biafran? No. Somebody like Peter, just because he be there didn't make him a Biafran. He have massacre Christians in Biafran. He have evil Christians in Biafran. And you tell me he is a Biafran? Or somebody else who don't want to tell me these are Biafrans? No! If these people are real Biafrans, I will tell you that you lie, that I can't be a Biafran with them. They are not. Biafrans love themselves. Biafrans are good people. The real Biafrans care about one another, care and do what is right. Homeland, wake up! The administration, the admin in homeland, if you are not being homeland, you are the governor of that state. You operate as the governor. Know what to do to mobilize people in your state. If whether you are doing enough, you are not. I'll tell you how I feel and how we Biafran people look, see. We want something to show for it. If not what Briget is doing, nothing to show from homeland for now, apart from the BDF. Homeland, wake up! Stop this being a boy. Stand up, be a man. Fight and defend your family. Forget about this threat. They have still fear in you. Be a man. They still fear with terrorism. No one have the monopoly of violence. If they come with sword, you mash it up. Then if you can support the BDF, if you can mobilize people that will do it. There is no mobilization going on. Not every town hall meeting, you find one or two, three people from one state, you say they represent this state. Represent what? This gathering today was supposed to be recording from hundreds and thousands. We are liberating a nation. We are liberating a country. Not a few group of people. We are giving, encouraging the homeland administrators. Those parlaying the affair of homeland to step up. Step up again! We are now in international global discussion. We are now in international politics. The world is watching what is happening from homeland. Do you think the world leaders, do you know how many times probably they have sent investigators to go and spy on what is happening in Biafran, to go and investigate, to find how effective, how far we have gone with our liberation? Make some noise! I have had meetings that I was asked some questions that I'm not going to say. And the question is that, all these evil people like Hope and others that are bringing this evil to kill us, have we hold them accountable? Remember what happened in Ghana, upon the Ghana, you know, after they have, after they get their freedom and at the time they have corrupt, corrupt masters as leader. What did Rollins do? It's normal in any society. If you have bad leaders, if you have those that instead of caring about the community, doing what is right, the people revolt. Will our own be different? Mumuwa i Abu Gare, Emirunu Emi, what's wrong with two people? Some of you have some ewe, some so-called useless gang in your community. Some of you know who is bringing these terrorists to your land, and you keep quiet. Some of you know who is bringing these terrorists to your land and you keep quiet. And you allow them coming. Destroy your crops, destroy your farm, burn your houses, kill your brothers, your sisters, and not this year when I work. And you think it's okay? Because it haven't getting to you. As we are speaking now, do you know how many of our BDF that this terrorist state succeed in on a life, life not killing? Because they will kill us, who will kill them? Do you know how many of them that are on sick bed? Yeah, because of sacrifice and our sacrifice. All these men that don't want to stand up, get out. Do you know how many of these BDF that have not seen their families for years? Some of them have not slept in a good bed. Some of them have not lived a normal life for years. When I be here now, I will move, okay, see me. Till they kill us all or what? Do you know how many of the BDF that all their family have been wiped out? Is everybody fight? Revolve, do something like never before. Emre Unu Emre? Is he on today, kill or not? Some of you, you live in your comfort zone, thinking it's okay. And for those, mark this date. The nineteenth of October, twenty twenty five. That all of you that are not supporting what we are doing. All of you that are backstabbing this freedom of African. A day is coming when you will seek for God in heaven to forgive you. When you will seek for African people to forgive you. You will say, I know. African people, we need to learn from history. Look at what happened to Iran. And to ever tell you how corrupt the Ayatollah uh that is from Lebanon. That turn Iran to something else, that destroy Iran. Ayatollah from Lebanon, the same place. This man that I said, who is this, this man is a disgraceful man to US. The same one that the Lebanese man that trying to help the Nigerian terrorist state that Tunubu invited. They're from Lebanon. When some people are corrupt, they are corrupt. You can only find some good few fruit from them. And remember what happened to Iran? Do we African wonder to happen to us? Remember what happened to Turkey? But in Turkey is where we have the Ephesus, for you Christians that read about Ephesus. The list go on and on. Remember what is happening in Europe now? Europe are fighting to free themselves from these nonsense, these terrorist people. People that don't care about it. Even Europe have what it takes to amend their law like in Netherlands, they have banned the hijab. But for we African we are fighting to liberate ourselves. We don't have all it takes like Europe. We don't have all the logistics to fight these terrorists yet. That is why we are raising from doing everything we can that we can use to defend our land. That we can use to help our vulnerable ones that need help. Is he on today, kill or not? Homeland, wake up! Next time we're going to have a regional town hall meeting, we want to sit our zones. And for those that are just watching from your TV screen, whether YouTube, Facebook and you decide to just just talk to look down to look more, just to see what we are going to do. How far we go? Who know who laugh last? But later, in few days, weeks, months, you'll share. You will find where to hide your face. Just like some of these accountability cool plotters that try to destroy what we are doing. Some are trying to find their way back, but it's too late. Can they undo the damage? Look at what is happening in the camp of the Jezebel woman, Cora, Fulani. A lot of them have the camp. And she is showing every day that she walk with the terrorist state of Nigeria. And some of you have seen selfishly pull her hair. That is why I said, not everyone who call upon the name of the Lord will enter the kingdom of God. Not everyone that shout, I'm a Biafra, Biafra, is a Biafra. They have infiltrate us for so long. Remember back in eighteen oh four, what was Madame Fodiu? His agenda to Islamize the African people. They have this plan for so long. While we are doing political correctness, we know it all, but at the end. Look at where we are. We smart people, but at the end, look at where we are. We claim we are more educated, but half far, look at where we are. To fight to get ourselves out of this terrorist, we are struggling. Because of these people that they have infiltrate that are among us. Out of hundred people that identify themselves as Biafra, I will beat my hand on my chest and said, over fifty percent are not Africans. They're not. And if you are Biafra doing what is right, thank you. Keep doing it. At the end, you will reap what you sow. At the end, we all rejoice together. What happened yesterday when Hamas break the ceasefire? Do you know what that tells? You cannot negotiate with terrorists. You cannot negotiate with terrorists. And with this Islamic jihadist and their ideology and their teaching toys, they can lie to please Allah. They can lie to deceive you, takia, right? They can lie, they can change from black to white just to get what they want. After that, what happened? They will slaughter you. The same Hamas terrorists as I speak are killing those in Gaza that don't want to work with them or want to recognize them. If the peace agreement continue, what will happen? More lives will be saved. They broke the peace deal because of their takia or whatever it's called. They are terrorists. That's what they believe. That is what the radical religion taught them. Do you think we can negotiate with them? Do you think we can coexist with such people? Why do you think they don't want to release our leader Mazinam Di Kanu? They don't want you to be free. They don't want me to be free. And because our leader exposed. Over ten years ago, our leader kept preaching that these terrorists are coming. They are coming. He even want these two face double standard people from Yoruba, right? Fake people that collude with these terrorists for years and we African, we refuse to call them out and identify them. They never like or love us. Our leader Mazinam Di Kanu. He blow the alarm, he told them, they are coming to Yoruba land. That they already in Yoruba forest. What is happening today? Some of the cities of the Yoruba land, the rural area has been overrun. If not because of our BDF. If not because of what some of you have been doing to support the BDF. By now, the African land will have been overrun. Those of you that don't want to support. Those of you that are costing us this pain. The land of Biafra will find it difficult to forgive you. And we African will find it very, very difficult unless you make a quick U-turn. And if you are in this struggle, whether home or abroad. Serve from the bottom of your heart, be truthful, be genuine. Do everything within your wish, do everything that you can. Especially in the homeland. I'm not here wearing this suit going to Washington DC every day to liberate Washington DC. I'm not doing what I'm doing for my own selfish gain interest. I put my life on the line, just Google my name, see mess. How they have destroyed this innocent man name. And some of you as well. I'm not here to look anybody face. If you are in the defect of government, we appreciate you. We want you to stand up! Take the bull by its horn, be a man. Do whatever. You know we are these terrorists people. The, you know the people that have come there to bring these terrorists? You know they are wearing and out, they want to mandem them. You can hold them accountable. Get out of this bondage, help yourselves. Heaven help those that help themselves. I love action. I don't like to talk too much. I don't have time. And for those of you thinking that after destroying this great movement, after killing Biafrans, you will go free over my dead body, you will not. If Biafra, the whole you accountable, I will do everything within my wish. If I can't do it, I will. The pain that all of you have brought to Biafra people, the pain that all of you have put us through, all the evil ones. Nothing wrong by holding people accountable. Here in United States of America, if you break the law, the whole you are counted. Here in United States of America, if the light is right and the stop sign and you decide to go, you pay the fine, the whole you are counted. And if you don't pay that fine, your license will be revoked from suspension to revoke. They can put you in jail, the guard can pay the fine, pay the fine, just fine. Even if it is one AJ or one AJ mark, fine, if you don't pay, your license will be revoked. At the time, we go to jail for that one done. Nothing wrong by holding people accountable, especially people, evil people that have killed people. Will never, ever happen under this law. Every sabotage must be heard accountable. Because of time and the homeland, this is uh I believe this almost twelve o'clock in African land. I think we have enough. Our freedom is in our hand, we do everything possible to free ourselves and shine your eye. Know those that are lying to you, identify the evil ones, you can tell by their modus operandi. You can tell by their way or their action, by what they are doing. You know, I'm still sometimes getting things confused because I thought Biafrans are smart. I thought we can identify, where we know those that have come to lie to us, to deceive us, to destroy us, to kill us. I don't know why some, they are move too much, some zombie is better than. And tomorrow is the protest organized by Shawore. Biafra Republic Government in Eza and the defect of government, we endorse him. Yeah, we receive a lot of uh scenes of flyer flying. How we encourage both the politicians, we have nothing to do with Nigerian politicians. We are not compatible. They know what to do. They kidnap him. The same way they kidnap him, let them release him. The who actually even initiate the protest is Shawore. Whereas all these useless politicians, so-called politicians, where have they been? All they do is to deceive the African people. We have nothing to do with these politicians. They still remain our enemy. They're the one that kidnapped him. They need to release him, they know whatever they want to do, if they want to protest. How will you kidnap somebody and you still the one protesting? They know what to do. We don't want them to deceive us. And Shawore, we believe you will do the right thing and we are solemnly behind you. And for all Biafrans going to the protest, please tread with caution. Know that Nigeria is a terrorist state. Nigeria kill innocent civilians, it happened in Lake Ito gate. Where Tunubu, this evil ugly man gave an order. Tunubu, Tunubu give order. Tunubu order military to shoot, to kill innocent protesters in Lake Ito, in Lagos city. We already know his track record is an evil man. See blood sucking demon. Some of these people, they are instilled cult. All they do is to suck people blood by head. Evil people. Is it Chetiman? Chetiman is a co-founder of Boko Haram. So what do you expect from Tunubu and Chetiman? Please, those of you going, tread with caution. The war satellite is watching everything that we have. That can probably scare the Nigerian terrorist state not to commit atrocity tomorrow. United States of America actually want our citizens to be careful in Abuja, every other part where the protests will be going on. And tomorrow is Monday seat at home. And it happened that the protests fall in the same day. Lock your shops! Protest for your leader! What about if you are the one that is kidnapped and the African people decide not to fight for your release? How will you feel? Go fight for your leader. The war is watching your reaction. The Nigerian terrorist state is watching the restaurant. How many people will turn out tomorrow? They have tried everything they can with, they can get court injunction to stop the protest, it didn't work. Terrorist state will always remain a terrorist state. A dog will always remain a dog. A dog cannot turn to monkey overnight. A dog cannot turn A dog cannot turn to goat. Goat can never be a dog. Evil is evil. Good is good. Thank you fellow Biafrans. And for the great pioneers of this great movement. In future, today, tomorrow, you will be remembered by your work and how hard you work. Especially in the de facto. I'm more concerned about the de facto, not the government in Eza. The government in Eza is already doing his job. The de facto government, you are all in power. Use everything, use everything you have to free your people. Don't succumb to threats. Him that come to kill you. Don't have the monopoly of that. Him that come to threat you are still here. Eh, we you, don't have that monopoly. Be a man. Just tread with caution. You can be anywhere in your hiding place, ask what you have to do. No excuse. Thank you from here. Thank you. Ndewo.
Ndewo APM.
Oh, son. You are so good. And address. It's so beautiful. So beautiful.
Yeah, good evening, Biafran. Oh, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's already Monday. Oh, WhatsApp. No, not, not WhatsApp. Get it now. Okay. Alright.
Uh, Ndewo Younguna, thank you very much, my acting prime minister. Uh, thank you very much, our honorable Minister of Information and all the honorable senior house. And without wasting much of our time, because I know it's not too much of talk. I age in ten thousand and a year, I support by him, our APM group now. So, Oyobula, join us, support him. Thank you very much.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you, my son. Okay. Let's move. Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity again. The first thing, our APM. APM, I appreciate you a lot, you know that. Appreciate you. And a lot will lead you to, to get this Biafran force. He mentioned about the pledges that people would make. Not only today. The pledges are derecorded properly. People bring pursuit to make sure they pay their pledges. Um, who are the people that are responsible to check the pledges that people make? Not uh, empty pledges, you know? People like us will make pledge within a week. Or a day, actually. So please, all Biafrans. Let us um, pay what, what you owe the Bible. We say pay what you owe. Please. Um. My son appreciates the suit of our prime minister. Because he has the suit like that. He said anytime he comes, I should, I should make a pledge of thirty. So, put thirty down for the house. Secondly, our BDF, it is, it's awesome. I don't know if a member of them are here listening. You are wonderful. I appreciate you a lot. I'll put another thirty for that. Add sixty and add sixty again. Um, this organization. Since we've been doing fundraisers, I haven't seen it like this before. This has, this has, you know, interested, this is interesting me. That all other fundraisers and the people that are doing fundraising. Let them organize it so that a lot of people will come and follow them. The de facto, I appreciate you a lot. And put another twenty. And may God bless you and that is um, one forty. God bless you. God bless you.
Thank you. Before the honorable Minister of Information, please let you and the. Uh, CEOs, you know, take the charge of uh. Every, uh, if you have to employ anyone for that, uh, please. We need to get a proper record and the receipt will be sent to you and CEOs, please. Very, very important. Thank you.
Bishop Olilebiani Mau. Bishop Olilema Ramau. Oh, yes, he better easy. I'm a bad guy, okay, but yes. Why are you people saying that somebody is holding you by the throat?
Four hours now and I. There was one hour, my son.
No, no, you didn't.
Okay, thank you. I'm okay, be quite good.
Sorry, I forgot to say, I forgot to say. A pleasure twenty month for your dressing there, because that will was sixty. Yes, please, a pleasure for you. Just so wonderful, so smart.
Good morning, Biafrans. For today's event, I'm supporting with fifty AJM. Please, write it down for me. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, uh, Mr. Sule. My name is. On the internet, I'm a little bit, uh, I'm a little bit of a.
Okay. Agamara, my guy, the girl, she's a. Agamara, my. Thank you.
I'm there. I'm here, please. I'm here. Uh. Yes, let me do the closing remark. I think that's the next agenda. Okay. Uh, I must say I'm overwhelmed. When I was planning this uh. Southern region uh town hall meeting or other APN's visit. I saw the meeting of the executives. It was very scanty and fear gripped me whether this will still get heard. What I go today, your people have done me. That is so marvelous that I don't know how to thank you. May Chukokika. Who made it possible for all of you to come from various zones. To grace this occasion. Bless each and every one of you and replenish your force abundantly. I most specially thank our APN. Who is working tirelessly. Going from place to place. He has no time of his own. By this hour in the Afaland, it is twelve for twelve oh seven. And he has been walking around the clock. Over there, I don't know what is the time is. So I thank you so much, my APN. I have noted down all the things you said in the Afaland. We are trying, but we need more. And that is the essence of creation of regions for us to reach the best route. We are making frantic efforts. Even those some are very reluctant. But the serious ones are doing the job. And I still uh promise you. As far as Northern Region is concerned, the few states. That are still inactive. We make sure we're, you know, revived so that we carry every person. Thank you very much. All, all your cabinet members, I love you all. Continental reps. Admins, all the citizens of Afal over the world. Thank you so much for participating and pray that your people should put us in prayer because we are being endangered by this. Jada PDF. I don't know where we'll be by now. My thanks also go to our BDF for sacrificing their lives. So my brothers and sisters. Try as much as you can from time to time to deep into the pockets and remember the BDF so that they will never lack.
Oh.
Thank you so much. My minister, we are grateful with you. You are doing a marvelous job. No rest from morning till evening. Thank you and God bless you and your family. We are grateful on behalf of the entire northern zone, we are grateful. Thank you all. Good night.
Bye.
Uh, I would like to call up Honorable Eman to do the closing prayer. Honorable Eman, give a closing prayer. Let me be, may be formal. The Alanso Solar and Sato do the closing prayer.
Yeah, good morning from here. It's already morning in, in Afaland. Yeah, it's still. I answer. Namendu. When you can in a sinakaya. When you were. Na manekeneki. Nisoba kaya bundi notan region, Jafra, landi ware. So she is the way by no boss data. Oh, but I had, I would like. Guide in Baguio. I can do what you could. When yes, I am. Yeah, maybe just then I know Bragi. We are well sure. Is in days. I can begin easy. Oh, my name is. I guess in DC abroad. Where but where lata. Makanya boo. Oh, but I am. I can. Can I watch in the day? We could. Make a. Uh, it's. But I. Can I watch? Namendu go see. I guess. Say bahani. Aror. If I have a business. When I went. Hey, go. Hey, do we know?
Hmm.
I know. I got. Where's the guy? Don't worry, I pull him. I know. Nisumunai in there. Nine den. He was. Come here. Mano. Na di so. I know. Was it? Nisi. Indu. I guess. No, get. Honorable, okay, you can care.
Yeah.
Oh, be. Oh, I was. Oh, so we're. Makana. Then we are. He hope. Makana. Who's in a cage?
Hmm.
Oh, go. Anna number nine. When you see a nadiso.
Hmm.
Take away. So did.
Oh.
Hmm, dance. He care. Man, I need to be. You need to be. I can. Um, but. Root up. Okay, when I hear. Yeah, you're. Nisue. Make. And if. Can. When I know. May he here in any.
Hmm.
May. May. Chuku. Anya. Or.
Hmm.
Worry. I am. Now you want. He's so. Oh, you end. Madogu. Bonne. He better. Nah, America.
Hmm.
I found. Oh, my. Na di so. Get. Back. Don't worry. I don't.
Hmm.
I am.
Hmm.
No go. Na di so. And if. Oh, better. You go. In. But. He end. I am. I get. Nah, it's still. He say. He say.
He say. Eh, he say.
Very warm, thank you.
Very warm.
Thank you. You are, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen. Uh, take what we learned today, please take it to heart. We are liberating homeland, we love Biafran, we love everyone, we love all of you. We just have to do more. This is not time to sleep. Yeah, when I say to sleep, don't mean that. You don't have to sleep. It's time that we have to be vigilant. We have. In Namdikan, we are. You know the reason. So we have to do what we have to do, more harder offer. We have a pride. We know the reason why they. They owe him. So it's not just time for jokes. We need people who are really going to be serious minded. Knowing that fighting for freedom is not a joke.
Hmm.
Require those that help us, that ready. Fight, ready to do what is right. Some of us, uh, you know, we, 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 we put over half of our day to uh what we are doing. Both midnight, we are meetings, phone call, please.
Uh.
Homeland is where we are liberated. All of us, our eyes are not where we reside in abroad and we that reside abroad. We are not fighting to liberate the street or the city or the country. Where we are is the homeland. Everything weighs down to home.
Yes.
So we want homeland to be formidable.
Ah.
For all the admin, you represent the governors and that actually what you are. So you have the power to do everything you can. Come with ideas, anything that we have to mobilize Biafrans.
Yes, yes.
Know how you would do it, be smart in doing it. Not everything you do. Do that you, you know, the Nigerian terrorist state, we know that you're the one behind it.
Hmm.
We, we beg all of you from homeland, step up. Step up. So we want our ambitions like this to fill up. We want Biafrans to know what is going on. Mobilization work and any. So you have to be careful and by doing that, you will notice that align.
What?
You know, that's want our freedom. Not everyone, some of them will be rebel fighting against.
Yes.
Just be careful. We want us to succeed. We want the government, the homeland to be strong and succeed. And when the government. The home succeed. Biafran. So why we're doing what we are doing from, from abroad? Thank you all. And me and reps. And they want. Not the instance for bringing. Rep admin, we appreciate everyone. Wherever we go, we always go as one. We love you all. We all, you know, we all hold it. We all love our dear nation. That's why we are doing what we are doing. Not, we are not doing it for fancy. We are not doing it to please anyone. It's to please. It's us, it's for us. Biafran is for all of us. If it is good, it's for all of us. If it is bad, it's for all of us. Now the terrorist uh country, when they come to kill us. They don't stop. They kill everyone.
Hmm.
Yeah. Yes, if you're on their way, they will kill.
Yeah.
So please, we need to go harder. We need to do things like never before. This is the time. Especially now that the war, satellite is turning to that region, you know. So we want to be a witness and monitor everything that is going on. Please, who are going for the protest, we will tread with caution. Please, thank.
There were. There were. There were.
Uh, the message that uh like I myself and some over. Some where many food. Affairs that know what is right, they already know. Those that claim they are fighting for Biafran freedom, why they are not? Like when we went to Finland, our already. Declaration supposed to. Be everyone know that it's on the second. It all supposed to. No one. Put you ever start whatever talking about. Twenty nine, the process of the twenty nine. So those that are fighting against the release of our leader, they, you know, for. It be, it week. Biafrans can, those that are Biafrans know who they are. But the problem is that after some, some Biafrans identify this evil element. Why are they following? One minute they will tell you they are uh against the protest. The next thing they want to be in the center to pretend like. To act like, I think there's a video actually. Uh, as I, I, I came across where this evil man was talking about. Let's see how the protest. We got one of the minister of information. Uh, do you, you, you can, uh, place in. You play, play the video. You know, somebody pretend like they fighting for Biafran, why they aren't? The same. Evil people. We say, oh, if our leader was in Namdikan, the plan is for. He must. But it's. And we could. Nigerian government so that the leader will be released and when our leader will release. And then our leader will try to, try, try, try to this, this, this. You know, when somebody is lying, you can just tell them. So please, Biafran people. Be wise. You know, I grew up here that we Biafrans are smart, that we are wise people. But are we proving that we are? Are we proving how smart we are? I believe that we know what is right, we can do what is right. Please, let's prove who we are to. Or let, let the world know that we are not dumb, we are not stupid, we are not zombie. You know, we are not uh awesome, my portrait, that we are, we are smart and wise people. That's why wherever we go, all around the globe. We in any committee, we blending, we establish, we own business, just like I myself here united. So breaker, I've been employed almost all my life yet. Yes, because. If they are friends that we are, we don't. Work hard and we are proud of who we are. Please, it's time that we get our, restore our dignity. Get back, we are hardworking people, we are not terrorists. We don't go to any community and start begging us. In them for a full time or for, or whatever that uh for that country to take. Of us rather. We find ourselves in this society, that community, we contribute to the economy, we blending. We, you know, we work hard. If you come across any of the video, can you just. You know, people will try to educate them, educate them, some of them. And they physically. Some are just doubting, I don't know what they are doubting. And after seeing everything we are doing from Washington this year, it's only a fool. Only somebody who don't have this. We, you know, we have a double mind. All these other uh groups, the breakout groups, none of them will come to for the past months. Ask them, what is the result? What have they done for the Biafran people? How? They don't have anything to present to Biafran people, how they be fighting for the Biafran people. Rather, it's hard, it's coming, the Biafran people, how they are destroying Biafran people, setting Biafran people up. Exposing Biafran people identity and all that to the terrorist state. Thank you.
Nah, you see it can.
Yeah.
See it can.
Who, who, who is working? When the first meeting that was there that. I attended that meeting. I was there laughing at it. I attend the meeting uh with Chris Smith. The congressman, uh, share of uh. Uh, chairman, Chris Smith, I attend the, 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 you know, the hearing, I was there. And I have had several meeting with uh with this congressman, uh, Chris Smith, who share with the chairman. So and we have had serious meeting with congressmen, women and senators, even a senator. A great senator from Texas. Why I always refer in calling him a great senator is that. Very big, it's about. It's about. It's about uh, uh, you know, uh, freedom of religion, freedom of, for persecuted Christians, freedom for Christians. It's just about humanity, you know, about values, who we are, people who we are. Not falling in the hand of all these monsters that we, you know, that, that all they, all they pray for is how to kill you. Islamize you, destroy you, wipe you out of this. So those that are claiming, can they prove, can they show us like a proof of meetings or what they have done? They have nothing to show.
Hmm.
So they can fool themselves. But uh it's just heartbreaking that, you know, it break my heart. I don't know why some Biafrans will fall for this people. For for their lies, they sit, they're just so shameful. That's where I still is with my claim that not of the hundred, uh, out of hundred percent, you have over fifty percent that are not Biafran. So I still stand with that claim. Because some of these people, they are not. And they like us, they hate us. Yes. They infiltrate us for a long time ago and we just, we didn't know time until nineteen uh sixty seven. And we'll break, uh, breakout, so we have been infiltrated. So we have monsters amongst.
Hmm.
I don't know if anyone has these people that are claiming, do they have any proof? What, what do they have to show for it? How many meetings have they have this year in Washington? This. We have, have tens of meetings and there's still meetings lineup. That will be soon. That will be soon, while the, while, while the, uh, while the government shutdown is over. We have meetings lineup and we are part from that, we are still having a meeting with some of the staffs, you know, before they call off. The, 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 the government shutdown. Uh, please, whoever have evidence from these people, body group one, Emma group, no group, Emma is group two. Uh, body group one, uh, Gosi group and Emma group. Actually, Emma group, how are they doing? Are, are they posting anything, anything? Things like foreign affairs, what they are doing? Have, have you, have you, have any of you heard from them, are they okay? Uh, let, one, sorry, are they, are they okay? How is that group doing? It's like they're even coming out. But the social media, they disappear, I don't know. Are they, what, anything wrong? This is, these people are crazy. And the upside, give me the winter, open their own organization, August twenty seventh, right? You still live, serve and go and open your own. Educated food is not good. I admire your body. That's okay. We continue. My role, honorable love, you say we continue. And let's, and let's. Uh, from, from the YouTube channel, I think you can, you can go to the YouTube and straight and probably play from there. This, I feel you are just pity, Biafran that are still, you know, how I heard it, I don't want to listen. And it's only one, looking at, looking at.
Good evening, yeah. Sorry, I am late. I have a family meeting, unavoidable. Thank God. I'm here. Uh, I'm from Endugu State. I'm supporting a town hall meeting today with forty thousand.
Hmm. Wow.
Please, Zoom user, thank you very much from Endugu State. The homeland interior minister, you have, you have this information, right? Any of the.
I'm from.
Government.
What is?
Hello?
I said, I am Amaka from Ohio, admin.
Oh, oh, from Ohio. I thought you are in homeland.
Hello.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That's. Your hard work, sir. You're like a minister of information. God be, keep.
Thank you very much.
Helping you guys. We will get there, you know, this time.
Yes, we, we just have to, the more powerful I have, add everything we doing, both in the homeland and in that's probably need to be more aggressive. Yeah, we have to, so we can, we have to be more aggressive. You know, I have no power of violence, that terrorist is coming down, I have no power of coming to Biafra and clean up. And they are going free, especially those that are bringing them. So they don't supposed to be in our land. Yes, we have need to hold them, hold them responsible. So please, those in, you know what your problem is, you know, those that are working the terrorists. I watch my hand. You are, just keep quiet. If you keep quiet, you keep bringing them. Even while we are liberating, push them out, all these evil sub down, we still collude and give them the green light to come beside. Watch out. Biafras, because it's too late. Wake up. There are. There were. There were. I know, there were. I'm ready. Uh, um, key, no, no, I can't call it. Something is what I call.
Yeah. The enemy, I mean.
I'm serving the.
I like where you.
No, I'm. But I'm for everybody.
I will, I will. I'm on, on a, I like it so much. I like that.
Not, not.
Because of the way you answer, the way you answer. Oh, ah.
I, I.
Hey, hey.
Let me, let me call her. Um, key.
Hmm, sorry. Ah, there you are.
I'm sorry, I have a problem.
I'm going to be jealous.
I'm sorry.
You.
Thank you. Thank you. This is happy, I didn't hear your voice today. Are you here?
Hmm.
That's not me.
I'm not.
I guess more ear, but my ear, the ear would.
Hmm.
Uh, there were. Thank you very much. Love you. Please, keep fighting, keep fighting. Don't give up.
APM.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not.
I, I will check your telegram before you get a ticket.
Oh, please, don't give me fine.
All right, then, then check your, check your telegram.
All right, I'll, I'll check, yeah.
No, give me his sign, I pay his sign. No, Bishop.
Honorable, honorable, give me five, please.
No, 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 Bishop.
I will rescue you already.
The, the, the matter is, before Bishop is. Hmm. Bishop.
I will rescue you already.
The, the, the matter is, before Bishop is. Hmm. No, before Bishop is. Before Bishop is in UK, monitored, he's already finished.
The problem is too much, right?
We already finished our problem.
Right.
Bishop, eh, Bishop, my love. It's a, in my, that you are not supposed to come between a man and a woman. Oh.
Yeah. All that.
I'm sorry, because, but. But. But, but.
There were.
Oh, my love. There were. Ah. Ah, ah. That's what I want. That's the complete, they did. Yeah, yeah. No, and this one is the same, old man and woman. Yeah, you know, we, if I Biafran, we keep it straight. That's.